...the city council meeting on Tuesday, September 17th, 2013 at 7:04 PM. I'll ask for confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice.
The agenda was posted at Pigley Weekly, Dave's Ace Hardware, and the Shaw Municipal Center.
Thank you. Number two is welcome to citizens and address any questions or concerns not on the agenda. If anyone has anything? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Mike Kelly. I live here in Milton at 852 Parkview. And for the last about year, I've been living across from a burnt-out apartment building. There's been little or no work done on that in the last year. I'm here as a resort. I don't own the property or anything. I'd like to see something done with it. Pressure put on the owners, whatnot. It's a dangerous place. It's, it looks terrible. It's in massive disrepair. And with children in the area, I think it's unsafe. I have some pictures, a good pass around of the building. There's also people living in the building right now. I don't think it's safe for them. I'm not quite sure if they're squatters or what the nature of the people are. I know the police have been there a few times for disturbance calls. And, you know, it's, it's an unsafe place. And I'd like to see something done, have a timetable put towards the owner of the building to get it fixed, repaired, or demolished, whatever, whatever may be the case.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Kelly?
I guess I'd like to ask Mark, what, as your attorney, what can we do if he doesn't fix it?
Well, it's not a topic that we can discuss right now because it's not on the agenda. So, at this point in time, what you can do is to listen to the concerns of the citizens and take note of the voice. If you feel that it's appropriate to follow up on it, what the city attorney has applied on it, who do have a place in a future meeting. But because the general parties can't actually discuss the topic.
Mr. Mayor, based on the comments, if the council does seek action, I would encourage referral to both the Public Safety and the Public Works Committees.
Okay. Is that what we'd like to do? Put that on their next agendas and we'll, we'll get some action on this. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
My name is Linda Clark. And the reason that I wanted to come up here tonight is because I would just like to remind the council that in October, we will have our annual prairie seed collection. And I just kind of wanted to give you a little description of exactly what we do and the importance of our prairie seed collection. The prairie seed is not like your typical garden. The, the plants are actually more developed in the root of the plant. So, this is how we can go through our prairie and we can deadhead the plants and then spread, spread seeds throughout wherever we're going to spread them. In the past, we've expanded the prairie out at Crossridge. And then we have also put seeds along some of the new highways, which makes this an excellent cost-saving situation for the city. The prairies are low maintenance. They have to just be burned once a year. And what I, I just want to invite the council to come to the prairie seed. If you had not been to one of these, it's a really relaxing, nice fall day event. We do encourage groups. We encourage couples, families, anybody really can come. So, I brought some flyers that I just want to pass out to everybody. And what I would ask you to do is take it to your church, take it to your workplace, and just kind of get the word out that we're doing it. The more people that we get, obviously, the more seeds we can collect. And we had a very dry season and a very hot season last year, which fortunately for our prairie, gave us more seeds this year. So, there's a lot, a lot of picking to be done out there. So, I just wanted to remind you all, and I'll pass you out some flyers.
Yes.
Oh, boy.
Perfect. Actually, after our last council meeting, I really, it's really kind of been bothering me because we didn't have a chance to talk about it. And I understand this isn't on our agenda, and it's something that I'd like to put on the agenda, is that we had a request that we, you know, we stop our meetings at 9:00 PM, which I'm, I'm all for being efficient and I'm, I'm all for, you know, having, you know, appropriate discussion. But at the same time, I think that's something that the, the city council as a whole should talk about and discuss. And, you know, I, I want open government. I want things to be talked about. And I know a lot of things probably can and should get done at the committee level. But at the same time, I, I don't want our message to be misinterpreted that the public can't come and talk and, and we are not welcoming to them because we need to get out of here on time, or if one of our council members has a concern or doesn't understand something, that they feel like they can't talk about it because of a time limit. I mean, that's, sometimes democracy takes a long time. We've seen this happen in Madison. This is what a local government is about. So, I guess I would like that to be put on a future agenda to, for us all to discuss the time limits. It wasn't on the agenda last week or the last week, or we just, it was just kind of thrown out there and, and I felt like we didn't have enough opportunity to discuss it. So, I guess I would request that the meeting-
Sure, we can put that on a future agenda.
Yeah, I think it needs to be.
Thank you.
That was something that was suggested by multiple council members, that we suggest more work be done at the committee levels.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't find multiple council members that-
We can certainly-
When I talked to them, I'm sorry, I didn't.
When we put that on the agenda, let's also consider starting council meetings earlier. Though, good decisions are never made after a certain point of the night.
Sure, sure. But let's all, you know, I just, it's just something I think all of us should be able to talk about it.
Sure.
Have time to do that.
All right, good. Anything else? All right, I will move on to the consent agenda. Items six, seven, and 10, in the spirit of the last note from Alderperson Welch, have been asked to be moved down, which is good. We'll have good discussion on those, and we will put them on after item C in item four. They'll go right in a row, six, seven, 10. With those changes, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four, new business, discussion and possible action regarding John's disposal service contract extension for 2015-2018.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city's Personnel and Finance Committee met tonight to discuss what was proposed by John's disposal. The city has a contract with them through the end of 2014. That contract is scheduled for a rate increase that is described in that correspondence sent to us last week. John's disposal had proposed waiving that proposed increase for 2014 in exchange for an additional four years of a contract for 2015 through 2018 with proposed rate increases tied to the Consumer Price Index. The city's Personnel and Finance Committee is recommending to the council to authorize the administrator to negotiate a new contract with John's disposal for potentially a lesser duration of time with rate increases not either prescribed and/or not to exceed the CPI rather than tied to them as is first proposed. So, the recommended motion from the Personnel and Finance Committee is to authorize the administrator to continue a discussion and negotiate with John's disposal service for an extension of their existing contract.
I think, I think they've done a good job.
Yeah.
I think, I just didn't want to commit to four years without knowing a price of some sort, so.
Especially if all of the sudden, service doesn't stay the same.
Yeah, this is the part where maybe they change owners in three years, and what are we toast? You know, we, we don't know.
So, I, I'm, I'm very happy with what they're doing, too. I just think that our administrator should have the authority to negotiate.
I understand why they want a long commitment because it makes a difference in their purchasing and stuff, too, if they know how many trucks they're going to have out. At the same time-
But four, four years is a long time.
Well, that, that's right. At the same time, four years is a long time.
Yeah.
You know?
I don't want to be married to them that long.
Well, I, I'd move that, that Jerry tried to come up with a deal with them and see what, if we can get a lesser or some kind of a price.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Item B, discussion and possible action, providing direction on the design of a new city logo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The group that was selected by the council at their last meeting in August, Signal Fire, has submitted their first draft renderings of a new city logo for your review. They were sent out electronically, some of them on Friday, with additional ones also sent out this afternoon. And I'd like you to take a look at those. I did print some off that Connie has here for paper copies for anyone who is here tonight that would be interested in seeing them, as well as hard copies for council if you did not get to see.
There's just one I'm, I can't find. Is it the tree one? I saw it, but I don't know where I have it now.
It's in that-
I have the amended-
Pack that he sent this afternoon.
I have that amended one.
He sent this afternoon.
It's not in the amended pack.
Okay.
Says, "City Logo Updated Presentation at 10:37."
I just sent it to you.
Oh, I got that one. That's where I found it. I couldn't find it again.
Okay, that's the one that's over here.
I like the one with the trees.
The, the one with the trees looks just like we live right next to Janesville and have a different tree.
Or is that-
Why, is that their logo?
I just want to say, is that Janesville's logo?
Yes.
They have a pine tree.
You can see how impactful that's been.
No, they have an artistic ribbon tree.
Janesville's logo with respect to the tree, and I'm an absolutely pitiful artist, but it is more of like a-
This is going to be the highlight of the night here, folks.
...line like that.
It's a ribbon.
And they're going to be like disgusted that I did that, but it's something like that.
Maybe Mark can draw there.
Mark, you want to give it a try?
I want it in his next contract that he needs to take drawing lessons.
Just need to do it all in a squiggle.
Right.
I'm not in love with any of them.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, it's not what you like, it's what you just like.
Can we go back to the drawing board? Or is this all we get?
You can certainly do that. I, here's where a little bit of, I'll, I'll say, I'm encouraging the council to move closer to a decision, is that the Milton Area Chamber of Commerce, in working on this project and a welcome to Milton sign, has the community fund tentatively committed to a very, very substantial donation to our new welcome to Milton sign. What that is hinging on is the, we want that welcome sign to include a city logo. Obviously, I don't want you to rush to decision. I want you to like and, not only like, but really, really like whatever it is that you decide on, because there's considerable investments in using whatever logo that we would agree upon. I will tell you, after electronically communicating with the staff from Signal Fire, that the tree itself and the concept of a community established since 1938, if you, or I'm sorry, 1838, i-if you read the, the depiction of, that they have in their proposal and design concept number three, I do think it does depict a lot of our community's values. I think in what I shared with staff electronically, just bouncing it off of them to say, hey, what do you think? More people seem to gravitate toward the tree. Reason being, I think more so, it's, it's symbolic nature. Milton doesn't necessarily, that I'm aware of, and we've gone, this is our second firm now that we're working with, doesn't have that iconic thing that really just stands out and defines us. The Milton House is a great tourist attraction, but I don't know if that really necessarily defines our sense of community and why people would want to live here, or go to school here, or work here. And I think that's what we're looking in terms of a marketing and branding logo, is, you know, as, as I look at that one, although it's got a lot of, you know, great art to it, as we talked about it in our last meeting, I don't know that trains for which, you know, we field a lot of phone calls are about are what we unnecessarily want to, you know, utilize to promote our city going forward. And I'm admittedly not a marketing and branding specialist, that's why we've hired these folks to help us with this endeavor. And these are some things that they've come up with that they feel would be eye-catching and would be simple, using private sector concepts that keep the logo more simple in nature, and simplify it a bit so it's easy to reproduce, hangs nicely on banners, is eye-catching, but more importantly, symbolizes the combination of our city's commitment to community along with its proud history. And in looking at that, in looking at that last sentence and that, and that conceptually, I think the, a strong oak tree, coupled with that, you know, a community since 1838, few people may really know that our city has, is, not as a city, but our community, has been in existence for 175 years. And that the experiences that people enjoy aren't new, but they're, they constantly are reborn, kind of like a tree is. And it gets bigger and stronger, and it's shade more encompassing of that sense of community beneath it. And so, for, in that regard, I think the tree is a, is a good concept. It tells a story, like every tree in our city does, it tells a story. And-
On any of the designs, I think the tree has been the nicest. It looks the best of all the designs we've been and the other ones.
There was a snide remark made when my husband looked at that about, gee, was that in honor of the ash tree that came down for the splash park?
Yes.
Yes.
You may have heard from others.
Some have argued Director Robinson is a tree lover.
I think Hallie's been in your-
We'll call this a Howie World.
He may have had some influence, so.
I like, I like the tree, but I like the concept. I like, I like the idea of number two, that Milton represents many things. I, I like that. I don't know necessarily if I like the design, but I like that idea that we do represent a lot, a lot of things. So, we're not just one, we're just not one thing. Maybe we brought two cities together. But I'm open to anything.
I think what's kind of cool about the tree is that, you know, like, you know, Janesville's got the pine tree, you know, and it's, it represents, you know, parks, and it's neat art. But an oak tree, you know, it's got that solid trunk, you know, the, that old growth, that base. And then there's all that new growth that comes off, and every year, it, it stretches farther, and it does more, and it, and it, you know, provides more to more people. And I don't know, you know, if there's another icon that we can use, then, you know, we should find it. But a tree, I don't know, it's, it says community to me, I guess. I don't know.
Well, are we going to plant a tree, then?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, like-
Well, this is a big one. You're going to have an expensive tree to plant.
I'm just saying, like, we should roll out a tree planting thing, then, to go along with this, to plant.
I want a, I want a community Christmas tree.
I want one, too, along with a tree.
A Christmas tree?
No, it can't be an old Christmas tree.
Just checking.
We'll get one from Janesville.
No, we won't. I'm fine with a tree.
I am, too.
So, this is just the first draft, though.
It's not necessarily the final product. What we want to do is we want to try to hone down that work. So, if conceptually, you, you know, pick one or two and say, really refine that and come back with a finished product, project at your October 1st meeting, the community funds announcement is anticipated to be that first weekend in November at their annual fundraiser. And so, what I would hope that we would be able to do is be able to illustrate to that group, hey, thank you for their investment, this is what it's going to produce. Because the, the chamber did a nice job in actually writing that grant and emphasizing the importance of a new welcome to Milton sign. And I think that's going to be an important component to this, is that we want to show them what that, what their investment is going to give.
Are we just supposed to choose one of the three?
You can choose one or two, and I, and then I would go back to President Matt Olson from Signal Fire and say, this was the council's thoughts, this is what they liked, this is what they didn't like, and then really kind of narrow the scope of their project work.
One thing about Friday and Friday show that is that they honestly can't read cursive.
That's all the more reason it should be in cursive.
Okay, I, I'm just bringing this up as a consideration.
Parents will bring the subject up.
Yeah, you want to learn to read, well, read a round clock while you're at it, but yes.
Your grandchild teaching cursive?
No, I don't. Because my, my granddaughter-
City of Milton, city of cursive. Yeah, this is-
If we're going to a tree, we don't want any cursive in it.
Any other thoughts? I hear a tree, city staff perspective, some like the red circle M. They thought that would look nice on police cars, public works trucks, you know, stuff like that.
This one's, to me, is definitely out.
Out? Okay.
Marathon gas.
Borderola.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If we're going to expand to our-
The rainbow, we got one vote at City Hall. People like the, what I call like the rainbow colors in the circle. People thought that was really colorful. I cringe at the cost of reproduction, but I thought that was, that was, it's good art.
Every printing is full color.
Yeah.
Modern.
Right, the, this looks a little classier or something.
So, which one of the four do people like the best on that tree logo page? Not that you're picking one, but-
I like the, the middle one by the- Oh, and it is still in a box. You still like your tree in the box.
It's in boxes.
And a little cursive, so that you do have to teach.
Right. And it's two little words, so it's not the big community word.
I like the enlarged one on the left.
I like that one, too, if we did stamps, like commemorative stamps.
Yeah, the one on the left, the bigger.
Those two would be my first, my-
Either one of those would look good on letterhead. You try to, you know, picture it on a business card or letterhead. And that one, the, the one on the left, may replicate very nicely on a sign. You can imagine what we'll talk about later tonight, about where that would be positioned and what people would see. That is a pretty big icon in having city of Milton in very large letters. I think that's very eye-catching.
Well, that is physically printed larger. It is the same concept without the box on the top one.
Like the color?
Blue.
I mean, I, I love the color. It's probably my favorite color in the world, but it doesn't have anything to do with that particular blue.
It's not. Oh, you loved it?
Yeah, ever since I was a kid. I think it's because of the flag, I don't know.
Go.
But that's just what they sent it to us and to be different, you know? We could try other colors.
Do you want to see it in different colors? So, we, we ask them, these people are working for you.
Is it a navy?
It's just a really, yeah, like a really deep-
Can we see it in black?
Sure.
Green, fall colors would be pretty.
I heard, Maxine, you say red, white, and blue. Do you want to see a-
No, I just say our water tower.
She likes the blue.
Our water tower is white and blue.
So, one request for the tree in black with an emphasis on either the one on the left or middle.
Well, they kind of have a combination of black and blue.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a gray and, and blue, yeah.
I guess I kind of like the one without the box on the top.
Yeah.
But it's basically the same, same thing.
Yeah, right.
But the trouble is, when you have your cheap printer and you've printed the same letter 15 times, the lines squiggle.
What about that script?
It's not mine, mine's off.
What about that script? Do you like that font? Do you like the, the serif font? Do you want to see other options there?
Well, I, to read it without my reading glasses, I'd use the one on the left.
That's because they print it bigger font.
Scroll.
It doesn't need to be too fancy. You want to be able to read it, you know?
And read it while you're driving by.
Right.
Right.
Yep.
We're, we're over here muttering about in 20 years, the kids will not be able to read the cursive.
It'll be like, like a secret club.
Yeah. You have to be old.
Exclusive.
They have to punch it into their computer.
Well, we can have a link on the city's website of how to read.
Yes, Inka? I'll work on that. Yes.
We're probably going to get a lot of likes for that.
So, I, I'm gathering kind of a one, two, and three, that upper top, and that, with the thoughts of, there's community in cursive, and then on the one on the left, there's city of Milton in the cursive. I will email Matthew Olson, their president of Signal Fire, and ask him to come back with a refined product for your review on October 1st. Please.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
For meeting, for meeting minutes, the design is design concept three that you want refined, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okeydoke, item C, right? Yep, item C, discussion and possible action on well number two repairs.
Can I have a question with that last agenda item? I was just wondering, did the sign that's out at the industrial park, is that to replace that sign? Is that coming out of the dip pond, or is that going to come out of this budget?
That has not been evaluated or proposed yet because it will determine what this logo is and then the, the actual signage and placement. It hasn't been fully vetted yet. That's the best answer I can give you right now.
Okay, well repairs. Everything's running right down there?
Pump failed on it, and it went from pumping about 300 gallons a minute to less than 40. So, we had, we had them pull the pump and examine it. The staff, the guys were there to make sure, you know, just to see when they pulled it out. Anyways, the pump was completely sealed up and rusted, and the pipes, when they pulled those out, were about the same way. They're 35 years old since it's, it actually had anything happen to it. This was actually quite a bit better price than we thought it would be. Most of the time, our well repairs are in the $40,000 to $50,000 range. So, this is a smaller well, and it's less pipe, but we would like to get this repaired. They can do it this fall yet. And when we redo the well building, this won't have to be replaced. This will be usable for when we do the next repairs of the well building. So, so it's not like money spent and then two years being.
Right.
Plus, this will make this well pump back up to the 330 gallons a minute compared to like 280, which it was dropping down to. And hopefully, it'll get a little less rust out of the water, too, if we get it repaired. It's over the $5,000, so it needs a city council approval to go ahead and get this, the work done.
Earlier we were positive this was going to cost over $40,000, and Jerry called me pretty late.
Yeah.
So, this is better. Do we have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we replace. We have to replace, well, to do the work, the, it's the pump. The motors and everything are down there, okay. It's the pump that- To get, to get the pump function.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Items that were brought down, number six, 36, is establish, establishment of guidelines for 2014 budget requests from nonprofit groups.
Thank you, Mayor. This was discussed at the city's Personnel and Finance Committee tonight, and as we- And as we received a request from the nonprofit organizations, felt it would be potentially a more streamlined process, yet at the same time, a more objective process, for the nonprofit organizations to have to answer questions. Those questions would then be scored by council members and then potentially discussed and evaluated in closed session with open session recommendations to come out about budget funding for nonprofit organizations. It's a more, a little bit more of an objective criterion process, perhaps than we've used in the past, in large part because we're getting additional requests from nonprofit organizations, and the requests that we're getting from nonprofits are more than they have in years past. So I think the process communicated to the nonprofit organizations in advance. All the person Adams recommended, and the committee unanimously agreed with them, that the question should be sent to the nonprofits in advance of the meeting, so they can come prepared with their justifications, if you will, or responses to those questions, inviting the council members in advance of them meeting and their presentations. And then you folks can ask additional questions of them at the meeting after reviewing their responses.
I also wanted to have them submit written answers to those questions. So when we get in closed session, we can go over each item. Score.
Other than that, we've only had four. That we've had additional requests for funding from the Gathering Place, the Historical Society. The Chamber made its funding request through the Tourism Development Committee. And then the YMCA of Northern Rock County made a request for its youth scholarship program. And thank you, College Preservation, yes, thank you. So we've received five requests in total.
It's, this is going to be serious, because these are all worthy causes, asking for realistic sums of money that go to help people.
But we do want to have them fine, so that we can have them all on nice, high pieces of paper.
Well, and I like the idea of having objective, objective criteria. So it's, it's just better that way to have everybody understand the process, where we're being open about it, and everybody has the same expectations, and it doesn't matter who you are, or what group you are, or who you know, or anything else like that, or who doesn't like you, or whatever, so.
The committee unanimously recommended that the council adopt this new process and that I send out correspondence to the nonprofits that submitted requesting their responses in writing one week before that council meeting.
We'll get the responses one week before, but we'll send out the letters right away, right?
Right.
All right. Anyone like to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that Jerry sent out the expectations and the processes, and we have an objective process for our nonprofits.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item 3C7, Milton High School's Youth Apprentice Program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was an item that was discussed at the city's Personnel and Finance Committee meeting tonight. Last week, I had the opportunity to meet with Amy Kenyon, who is the school district's coordinator of School-to-Work program. The program is defined in detail in the Personnel and Finance Committee, but it essentially encourages students who are interested in various careers to pursue those careers through on-the-job experiences, whereby they not only get paid, but they get school credits. And so the program, I think, is a very good one for us. It has been three years, four years. How long have you been with us now? Not including your intern time as an employee. You were our last intern that we had. Okay, so 2010. So it's been three years since we've had a student working up at City Hall and engaging them, learning about government, and felt that this, this high school's new program here is a good one for a variety of different reasons. One, when we eliminated the position of city clerk treasurer, divided up those duties among existing staff, we lost 30 hours of work a week up at City Hall. And like a lot of governments, you know, we're just continually doing more with less. So there are some job functions right now that are being performed by higher wage employees that could be performed by lower wage employees, answering the phones, counter service, things like that. The second component to this, I think, the more important one is, is that recruitment and potential retention of a new workforce high school students, seeing if college may find their career experience, or their experience here to be a good one. It allows them to learn more about government accounting. We have over 2,400 different accounts that we manage in the city, $7 million that we run, $4 million in general fund, $3 million in utility accounts, over 1,900 different utility billing accounts. And so to have an additional support person help with that, and to teach them about government fund accounting may spark a career interest, in addition to providing necessary help for us at City Hall. So I think it's a win-win for both students, the school district, and the city. And I would encourage the council to authorize participation, as was recommended by our Personnel and Finance Committee.
A great example of another partnership that we have with the school district that can, it's just another positive thing for the City of Milton to promote the, the working together that we always want to try and do and have a stronger community. So I think it's a good idea.
Okay, further discussion? A motion authorizing city staff to execute an agreement and participation in the youth apprenticeship program.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item 3C10, authorization to draft proposed restructuring of City Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item was also discussed at the city's Personnel and Finance Committee meeting tonight. It really stems as a result of what I would call three different forces or changes in our work environment at City Hall. All of them, I would suggest, are generally positive, but in examining our, our operations at City Hall one year after we reorganized and separated the city clerk and the city treasurer position, I think there are some things that we're performing more efficiently. It's, we're performing less expensively. But some of the challenges in the existing organizational structure go back to the creation of the city's charter ordinance in 1996 that actually created the city administrator slash finance director position. Technically, that's what my title is within the organizational structure right now. And in looking at some of the workload and the distribution of workloads, in 2010, when I was appointed to the position, about 90% of the work that I did was related to the management and oversight of the organization's finance and operations, about 10% related to economic development. I did find it interesting when looking at the job description from when the position was vacant in 2010 and the recruitment that the city did, there was an emphasis on economic development. Although if you look into our charter code of ordinances in the position of city finance director, nowhere is economic development mentioned. So I'm limited by existing code, if you will, by having really no code authority other than making policy and municipal government recommendations to you, which is a very blanket statement under the charter code of ordinances. But there's no specificity to economic development and what the council's expectations are of the position of city administrator in that, in that code. The second thing is what I would call it, the pairing of duties. And that is, we are really fortunate, I believe, to have some very talented people in and working up at City Hall for us right now. And, you know, those people, really all of them, but in particular, one that has stood out for me is our city treasurer, Connie DeKemper, and her skill sets in managing not only the utility funds, but providing a lot of guidance to me with respect to managing the city's finances in general. Most of the policy recommendations that I present to all of you folks come from work that is done by Connie, and recognizing their anomalies in our accounts or how much money we have in the various. I watched her skill set develop over the last, you know, 12 months in that position of treasurer. And the treasurer position manages the accounts. From my perspective, it would be more efficient to have the finance director treasurer position paired, because it involves with the city's finances. Whereas the administrator finance director position is always going to have to have a dialogue. And it's not a bad dialogue, but it creates an inherent inefficiency. The third component to this is an uptick in two areas of government that, one of them kind of good, one of them really good. And that is the area of human resources and human resources management. In the existing code of ordinance in chapter two, the city administrator position is the city's personnel director, our press officer, our finance director, and chief administrative officer. That's a lot of hats to wear. And so fortunately, we have some, as I said before, some really good staff at City Hall. But the evolution of the human resources function, in particular since 2011, and a lot of changes that took place when we become less dependent on union contracts and much more dependent on developing employee handbook policies, FMLA, FLSA, all those other things. With the addition of crossing guards, we're soon going to be an organization that employs almost 60 people. And we don't have, technically speaking, a finance department. We don't have a human resources department. It's a combination of all of us. So the more we can, you know, strategically assign and streamline duties to one person and then have other people check on that person's work, rather than to have a couple of people, you know, do the job, it just, it makes us more efficient. Right now, the majority of the work done in human resources that was formerly done by clerk treasurer, then clerk treasurer's Astro, is really being done by Inga, and we've sent her to a lot of civic trainings related to, you know, legislative changes in the Fair Labor Standards Act, the Family Medical Leave Act, and so, and the Americans with Disabilities Act, so that we're in compliance with those things. We recently went through an HR audit in November and December meetings. You'll see the results of that HR audit. Although we are good or adequate in certain areas, there are some areas that we need to improve upon. It is not atypical for a city our size to be kind of where we're at, but those are areas that, that need greater staff attention and greater focus. And we need people who are designated to those, to those areas to make sure that we're in compliance with all of those things. The third area, and the, and probably the, the biggest reason why I'm looking at proposing a few changes in duty assignments and potential realignment is the uptick in economic development. In 2010, when I started, 90% of my work was operational management of the, of the five service providing departments that we have. In 2013, it's probably about 65% of my time is spent on that, about 35% of my time spent on economic development. So if there are other areas that are, are not getting as much attention in terms of the management of the organization, some of those duties should be diversified and split up, so more time and more focus of the administrator position can focus on economic development. And with the recent completion of the Highway 26 bypass, it's probably anywhere between three to five calls and/or meetings a week that are inherently put into planning and economic development, which is a transition from where we were three years ago. So it's for those reasons that we're, that I'm recommending that you folks authorize me to propose to you some structural changes. Not as dramatic as they were maybe last year, but significant, so that we can set up the organization to succeed, recognizing that there's going to be an increased demand for human resources, financial services, and most importantly, economic development. I think those tweaks to the organization can only set us up for future success.
Our staff loves this idea.
To be honest with you, Michelle actually stepped in off of family leave today when she saw reorganization of City Hall.
I bet she did.
Here what we, we were going to do in her absence, and I told her she had nothing to be concerned about, and she chuckled, and it was good to see her. And I can tell you, after spending a couple of hours with Connie this afternoon, renewing all of our property insurance, which involved going every asset that we own in the city and making sure it's properly insured in the renewal process for 2014, I'm very anxiously awaiting Michelle's return, because that's a job task that she normally does. But I, I just think it's, it's part of what we do in, in constantly striving for improvement in the city is looking at what we do, why we do it that way, and then does it make sense with our code of ordinances and what we're communicating to the public about our positions? And the more efficient that we can become and the more effective that we become, I think the better job we do in government. So constantly looking at these things and making tweaks necessary to adapt to an ever-changing environment, I think is a part of my job's responsibility, and then presenting those ideas to you for approval.
I think it makes sense to free Jerry up to spend more time on development, because that's something that's very important next few years to get it right, or not to buy. The bypass is now going through where we have to economically develop, which I'm sure is bringing more attention to you. But my question is, usually when you change job titles, you change job pay rates. How does that work?
And that's where we present this to you in October during the budget development workshops, so that you could look at that and see, you know, there are some things that I think we can do to make some necessary, what I would consider necessary adjustments based on what I see workload distribution. In particular, Connie's position as treasurer, and if you were to transition her to a finance director position, would certainly be worthy of more pay. Some of the other duty assignments, I think we can adjust with some pay adjustments, but they would not be as potentially significant as that one, because that one has a lot of responsibilities associated with it.
Have you tried any numbers with this thought process?
I have not yet, and that's why.
Because that's where I'm, I left off, and how much is this?
The issue, I'll jump in real quick, is that we, how many people did we have in City Hall a number of years ago?
2008, when I started as police chief, we had eight. We are now down to five.
And the workload has grown. And so unfortunately, this budget, we're in, I would say we're still in a little bit of peril of not meeting expenditure restraint, because we, there's only so much you can cut with the things that we've committed to do. And we need more people to keep to do those things, and the only way to, to get more people is to maximize the people we already have, is time, and to make sure they're spending every minute they can on the thing that's most efficient. Right now, we're completely underutilizing Inga. You know, she does a lot of good work for some of the committees, but she's awfully highly trained to take, you know, minutes at the, you know, the little committees. And so we need to have someone watching that HR, because most of our plays will be on an employee handbook. And Connie has performed exceptionally well up there at City Hall in the treasurer's role, and it makes sense to utilize our people to the best of their abilities. So what Jerry and I had talked about is first making sure that everyone was on board with this. We don't want to waste the time going through all these motions if you're not. But then coming back with that better plan of what do the dollars look like, what does the job function look like, and how does this help our community move forward?
Well, my only concern is that every, I mean, we have reduced staff and we have more responsibilities for everybody, and now we're giving, I want them to be able to do it. It doesn't do us any good to assign up. And it's not that I don't think anybody is, that people aren't capable of it, but if we're assigning more job duties and we're just spreading them so thin that they can't do anything, you know, the way, the way that the time would require it to be done. So I mean, I, I'm fine with it, but then at some point, you know, we might have to just say, we need to hire another staff. So I, my concern is that everybody has workload that's manageable.
It's a minimum of 450 hours, and there is no maximum other than that.
We've talked about the need to reestablish an internship program at some point. We, you can get started with us as an undergrad, right? And every time she moved up a level in life, we just didn't backfill the spot or anything.
I'd like the idea. I'm just concerned what the overall cost is going to be, based on what you just said about restraint. Well, I understand that, Don. I understand that, Don, but we're talking about 2014. We have to know what we got going in, because we've got a big job ahead of us for 14. I, I agree. In the long run, it's going to be, it's going to be good for us. But how do we get past 2014?
We have a firm number that we're working towards in 2014 that we have, we have to hit. And in preliminary discussions, we feel like we can fit this plan into that number. But the budget process is going to.
Something else would be taken out of that plan.
The budget process is going to be a difficult one, and honestly, there's five or six balls flying up in the air right now.
Especially Don's.
Unfortunately, folks, there's not a lot there. Unfortunately, folks, there's not a lot there.
Go to a per diem. We'll all attend every committee meeting.
Yeah. Just a side note on that, I know, I know we got to keep going, but I was at a town board meeting the other night for the Humane Society where a guy was talking about how every time they have a meeting, it costs the taxpayers more and more because they keep on getting paid their per diem, and how that was irresponsible for the county to keep making them have more meetings because it cost them more per diems. Don't take the per diem.
So, so conceptually, before we initiate the work product, does the council want to see this kind of a proposal? Uh, that, that's why it's on the agenda. That's was the discussion at the Personnel Committee.
I, I want to have an approximate dollar figure because it's hard to think without that component.
Okay.
Well, I think I was just a little surprised because every year we're restructuring. Like, we're restructuring again.
If, if money were no object, we'd be, we'd be proposing adding at least two people, probably. Um, it's, it's a shell game. It's the box the state paints us into in a number of ways, so. Is there a motion on this?
I'd like a motion to have Jerry go ahead and work the staff to develop this organizational plan and provide us with the cost figures during budget meetings.
It's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. General items. Next meeting is Tuesday, October first, 2013. Mayor and Alder Person's reports. Um, I have a couple of things. Um, one, I, I don't know that this is necessarily the best time to bring it up or not, but tomorrow is our fire commission meeting. Um, some, some people were at the fire commission, uh, last go around, and it, it, it got interesting. Uh, tomorrow we'll have two, um, two issues, uh, among many that we'll be looking at. One is the budget, the 2014 budget, which, um, I think our half of the commission will, um, most likely vote, or motion to approve, uh, and vote to approve. I suspect there's a reasonably good chance that it will end in a tie vote with the town not voting to approve or asking to delay that. The second one is the repayment of the loan, which is revenue that we count on, uh, here in the city. It's built into our budget and they're thirty-six thousand dollars behind, and I, I think there is a reasonably good chance that the town, um, has not made any decisions on if they will or will not, um, take action to, um, get the fire department caught up.
Was it on their agenda, though?
It was on their agenda.
Did anybody go to that meeting?
Did they take action on it? They did not take action on it. So we feel reasonably confident that tomorrow night they'll tell us that they haven't made a decision.
Sure, Mary, I'll clarify that. I had a conversation with Chief Liff and Todd, and we discussed it, and it is our belief that based on, we don't update, so there's been no correspondence to suggest they take action. We were not in a tent.
I just saw, it was on their agenda, so I just assumed they would do something.
So.
If you've seen the agenda.
Yep.
We will discuss what happened last time and how we're going to proceed in the future.
Yeah, it was really something for those who weren't there, and it was, you know, completely inappropriate.
I want security.
There was an awful lot of firemen there. Um, second, um, there is, um, have been several requests, um, and reports made recently about, um, uh, homes, both abandoned and rented, um, that have, um, what I would certainly consider subpar, uh, living conditions. There are at least, there's the burned out building, um, that we talked about tonight. There's a building that, um, has an infestation of fleas and is abandoned on Parkview Drive. And there is a building, um, at the corner of North Side and Madison Avenue, not exactly, but one house, and that is full of lice and, um, what was the other one?
Like, how do we know this?
Bedbugs. Lice and bedbugs.
Those are, those are three parts.
All of these represent a public health concern, and all of these have been referred to the, um, the PD for code enforcement as well as the Department of Public Health, um, but I would expect to see something on an agenda coming up very soon on these. That's not the kind of thing we can afford to, um, nor should have.
Well, are we sending out letters to the landlord's son? Is that what we're doing, or?
Not all landlords. There was direct correspondence from Officer Larson to the property owner, and an extermination scheduled and took place, and the one that we dealt with this week.
The, the extermination did not take place. It did not take place. The price was forty-two hundred dollars for extermination, according to the tenant, and it.
There's a tenant there?
It's my, she's living in it with a four-year-old kid.
Well.
What's she supposed to do? She, all the furniture has fleas and bedbugs, or lice and bedbugs. I have a long email here from her. It's, uh, she moved in last month.
Well, pretty much everybody hears a mandated reporter, so.
So these are issues that are obviously very serious. Um, one of them is a home in foreclosure, um, uh, and, and had animals abandoned in it as well.
I don't know if you're listening to this.
But yeah, it, or, yeah, it's going through a process. And then finally, um, a sad note, but obviously less disgusting than those, is I wanted to personally, um, extend a, a thanks to Brad Smith, um, who's given our city a hell of a lot of good years, um, as a, um, I think he hired, did he hire, hired him as part-time?
He died in the.
Yeah, and worked his way, uh, right up the pole, uh, there, and he's moving to, uh, you never want people like that to leave, but he's moving to a position that's going to better accommodate his family and his schedule, possibly his sanity, and, you know, allow him to keep some of that head of hair. And so if you see Brad around, you know, definitely offer him congratulations. He's having a, a thing, uh, that everybody got invited to at, uh, the Red Zone.
Yeah.
So, anyway, big thank you to him, um, and that's all I have. Alder Person's reports.
I talked with Stan Mylan yesterday, and I called in to see if there was any progress because he had told us at the last meeting that Senator Cullen was going to schedule a meeting with United Ethanol. That hasn't happened, and I asked him why, and he said, well, in discussions with Cullen, he was asked why neither municipality has taken any action. I told him, well, I can't speak for the township. He said, well, I talked with Brian Meyer, and he said he was not aware that there were any complaints this year. I didn't know if he was living in a cave, as sure as what, that he didn't get them, but, uh, he also, in general discussion, showed no particular interest in addressing the situation, even though those are his people out there. Uh, as far as the city goes, I told him that, uh, our recourse is limited and that so far we've done what we could do, and I know you had a meeting set up this last week that didn't take place. I don't know if you rescheduled it or not.
We have not rescheduled. Mr. Kramer's father passed away, and so we had to reschedule, but it will be rescheduled soon.
He, uh, also questioned why, uh, he only heard from me. He hadn't heard from the mayor or the administrator, and, uh, I didn't tell him that I'm normally pretty crabby, that's why he heard from me, but that, uh, that, that was, uh, I talked with Jerry about it. Cullen had said that, you know, he was kind of, uh, iffy about jumping in here if municipalities hadn't done what they could. And I told him, I said, I wouldn't have called you if I didn't think we had exhausted all our efforts. And, and I told him, we talked with you, Mark, and what our legal limitations were in this issue, and all we were asking for is him to use his influence to try and get something done. Yeah, I'm not sure where we're at. I kind of felt like I ran into a wall. I'm getting used to that, but I mean, that's.
Well, since you will be retiring, I think his urge to fight may be totally.
Well.
You've got a year and a half worth of paychecks coming.
That's right.
Yeah, Mr. Kramer's, uh, uh, father passed away, and so we got a message from, uh, someone who obviously could not make that meeting. I believe he passed away the day before. Um, so obviously sad, um, but, uh, we expect that discussion here shortly. Um, I did notice, and you correct me if I'm wrong, United Ethanol looked like they did make adjustments as they promised to, uh, after that recent complaint.
The last order complaint that we have pursuant to what Brian Marvior, the DNR, said, that they would make part of their order control plan, they would make adjustments to their operations after receiving the order, like, and they did, adjusted this year.
Part of their agreement was to call back to the complainant and see if it changed.
Yeah.
They even told Tim Frank that they would call back. They did not. They, and they put on a report, couldn't make contact, and there was somebody at the house all that evening, afternoon and evening, so.
Is there any possibility of getting a gadget that would be a smell sensor?
Uh, Mylan's still looking at that.
Folks, I don't mean to interject, but Mark is reminding us that it's not on the agenda, so.
Okay.
This is just for information purposes at this point. Connie's, they can't discuss the topic unless it's on the agenda.
Okay. Well, let's put it on the next agenda for, uh, a discussion on what will or will not be coming out of the Senator's office.
I have some. I would like to, um, there was a letter in the editor, uh, letter from the editor, to the editor about, um, this person feels that we are not, that we should have the business districts, uh, our priority and forget about our police department and the library. And I just wanted to say that Alder and Lauder and I, along with five business people, we are doing everything humanly possible, along with the council and the staff, to provide ideas for our business district. So, eh, but as far as that, I think our, that's not our only concern. Our police department, our, our residents ask for, uh, public safety, and I think we're obligated for that. In order to do that, we have to have proper equipment and, uh, places for our police department. And the library, um, she has had such wonderful programs for our kids and the adults that everybody has come to them, so her space is limited. So, uh, I don't know how much more we can do for these business people. You know, it isn't our fault that twenty-six goes around us, but I just wanted it known that this committee has tried everything and been thinking of advertising and everything to promote the business districts, but they're not the only thing that we have concerned about in the city.
Spending the library does help the business district because.
Well, yes, you know, and, and.
That's an invalid claim.
I just wanted it known that we, we're trying. We've done everything.
A city analogy. You cannot put one greater than the other without damaging something, so.
And that, that, that same person, um, has spent significant time with staff and, you know, so, uh, we're, we're, you know.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't know how much more we can do. You know, we have other concerns besides the businesses.
Maybe that person could be on a committee.
They have to do a little bit for themselves also.
Good. Yep. Yeah, we have definitely done a lot to mitigate the negatives here. Any other Alder Person's reports? Staff reports? City administrator?
Um, really just two things. Uh, one of the, yeah, related to the Highway 26 bypass project, you will notice the big dump trucks from H. James, um, Construction Company, the contract firm that we had the borrow-fill agreement with to borrow-fill from Crossridge Park to dig the storm detention ponds along Parkview Drive. Howie and I, uh, and he walked along that area there. Uh, you may be familiar with the press release that went out last week with the Kaboom Grant. Um, as part of their site development work, they're going to do two things for us because that agreement, uh, required what's known as site restoration. They're actually going to level that area where that big pit is, and then they're going to seed it, and that's going to be a youth sports, um, practice fields area for kids. So right now, we're kind of in a little bit of a field space crunch for young kids' football, um, and some young kids' soccer games that pre-. But practices, when we built the ice rink, they can't play there anymore because they're sticking the, the stakes into the ground, uh, into the clay liner and that wrecked that, so we're looking at, um, trying to create more of a park atmosphere out there and utilize that shared parking lot that we have. Uh, and in addition to, they will do some level. So that, um, the construction of that forty thousand dollar Kaboom playground, um, can be done. So when you see those folks out there and you see that seeding going down, that was part of our exchange of work, and so that's actually being done, in essence, at no cost other than what it was to give them the fill needed to build up that wall. Um, the second component is obviously the award of the Kaboom Dr. Pepple Snapple Grant. I, although shared, uh, people electronically insured this park and recreation commission last night, uh, assistant to the administrator, Cushman, uh, worked hard, created a video so that we could get the Playful City USA designation. School District Bill was a part of that application process and provided us information related to our shared use agreements that, you know, school district playgrounds are open to the public for use after school hour. Uh, and then we were one of twenty-five cities across the nation out of two hundred and sixteen eligible applicants that were selected for that twenty thousand dollar grant. Uh, Crossridge Park is more and more, I think, to look like a park. I think that's the exciting project for us in 2014.
Public Works.
Park's officially closed. Veterans, the memorial is proceeding. Boop, um, to continue with the donations there for the brick pavers and other things. There'll probably be some stuff on the website for donations and to keep that process going. Um, these are all things before the next meeting. There's a Girl Scout run that you'll see on the streets around the weekend of September twenty-seventh. We're going to start flushing hydrants next week. Please don't put your leaves out in the streets until October seventh. Rush continues the rest of the month. Um, Public Works is hosting a chainsaw safety class. Um, a couple other cities are coming here. That's Thursday, so they're going to cut some of the dead trees at King Park, so we're going to kind of get that with some people helping us to cut some of those dead ones by the sledding hill, um, for free. Um, they're bringing them. They're actually bringing them, yeah, and they've got some professional guys are going to teach them how to cut the trees better, so we'll get rid of a couple of the bad ones in our own parks for, with some help. Um, highway's still on schedule for October first for the hanky road section to be open. Um, our city sidewalks should be done within the next two to three weeks, what we're repairing. And also over at Lamar, um, some of the volunteers are going to, um, finish the dugouts by putting in some benches, so.
Hey, nice job.
Busy, busy. Police Department.
Uh, last week, uh. Our third shift employees informed me that she was pregnant. I don't know if I can use her name and. Before you did. Okay. Anyways, you can probably figure out who it is, and so she's pregnant, and we were told in the doctor's note that effective October fourteenth, she can't work patrol, so we need to figure out how we're filling that after October fourteenth, and we're already in a hole with Brad leaving, and he works six-thirty PM to three AM, so our night shift is, uh, experiencing some vacancies at the current time, but we are researching options for LTE possibly. I talked to Zach Aniker, one of our part-time officers, and he's looking for a full-time job, so he said he was interested, so we might be able to plug him in there as an LTE to help us out with the staffing shortage.
Joint Fire. City Treasurer.
Not today, just the budget. I'm calling you with the budget now.
A little manner of the budget.
Okay, consideration of a motion to convene in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section nineteen, point eighty-five, prayer one, prayer need deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive for bargaining reasons required a closed session. Reference discussion of possible land acquisition along Highway 26 bypass and crossroads business park land sale and evaluation of legal services requested for proposal, RFPs.
All right. That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.